For the last two and a half years, you know, all the staff that I deal with at City Hall has been great. They've been helpful, encouraging, responsive, and that's not always been the case. I mean, I've sometimes been sitting in the mayor's, the chair next to the mayor, previous mayor, saying, "What in the world's going on here? And let's keep our goals in mind," and that sort of thing. I don't feel that way now. I feel much more positive, and I feel more like I want to spend my energy doing things that will help the city. So having those kinds of headlines in our paper was so disappointing. You know, I don't understand how this gets to this point, kind of what Beth was saying, how do we get from A to Z? You know, what happened in between? And I certainly hope that there was thought and proper notification and opportunity for people to make changes on both sides. Normally, my experience has been miscommunication happens, and the next thing you know, things have gotten to a point where they never should get. And this is one of those cases where the damage done to our reputation as Hot Springs, it just, I mean, all the work that happened for a year and a half, and then we have that kind of headline. It's terrible. And so I would hope everybody thinks about what was their part in this, and how could this have been done in a way that didn't get splashed all over the papers? Wasn't good for the people involved, and it wasn't good for the community. So I just want to say I'm very supportive of Nolan and the work that he's done. I hope that in the future, if this sort of, if there are problems, that they get dealt with in a way that is sensitive and follows the rules so that nobody's name is all over the paper before it ought to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Kara, I'd like to clarify one thing before we go any further on this. Everybody's talking about this being in the paper. I want to make it known to all the public that the city did not put that in the paper. There was not anything that was done by the city. I just want all to know that.
Good evening. My name is Mary Goulet, 338 South Fifth Street in Hot Springs. I want to share with you some of my reflections regarding our city administrator Nolan Shorter. There have been those times when my contacts with Nolan have been contentious, but whether we have been in agreement or not over details, Nolan has always responded to my phone calls or emails promptly and with the utmost respect. When we have been in disagreement, he explained an opposing viewpoint which allowed me to understand another perspective. This city should take pride in selecting a young administrator who brings fresh ideas and a new way of looking at things, that in the long run may help our community grow and prosper. His enthusiasm and love for the city helps bring a breath of fresh air, which though it may also bring immediate discomfort, as change always does, will help those who are willing to think outside of the box of the way it has always been done, to allow for opportunities for continued growth and inspiration for the future of Hot Springs. Now, I would like to take a few moments to share my latest email exchange between Nolan and myself. This is one example of how my attitude or viewpoint changed because of what he said. I had written on Tuesday, February 14th, at 10:30 a.m. He responded on Tuesday, February 14th, at 1:31 p.m. And what I had said was, as you know, I've been an advocate of the plunge and ran the newsletter that you received from the plunge, and that has been a great deal of our communication. But unfortunately, sometimes I get tunnel vision because the plunge is very important to me, and I don't maybe look at the city as a whole, as a city administrator should do. And what I had written him, I won't read it all, but it was about getting press in the paper for the plunge because we are in the black, and isn't this wonderful? And it's the first time. And I wrote him that, and he wrote back and said this, and I want to read it exactly. "Good afternoon, Mary. Thanks for passing along the suggestion. I am in favor of spreading some good news regarding Evans Plunge finances once Misty has the annual report ready at the beginning of March. One fine line we will try to walk is not to come off as an advertisement for Evans Plunge. One nice component, though, is the majority of our 2017 improvements all took place around the pool or pool type areas. We could also take this time to highlight the golf course. You may not be aware," and I wasn't, by the way, "but before we bought the plunge in 2013, it was the golf course that was the crosshairs for not being profitable. In 2016, we were profitable. There was also just not as much as the plunge, but still. This is the first time I'm aware of it since being an 18-hole golf course that we've achieved this." Nolan. And this is the type of communication where it broadened my viewpoint, and I hope Nolan will continue to broaden the viewpoints of everyone in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Let's move on then. I'd like to have a personnel, under personnel, if we could have a motion to accept all three of those, if we could, please.
Could you entertain a motion to approve A, B, and C at the same time?
That's what they are, A, B.
Right.
Please in, if someone.
I'll make the motion to approve A, B, and C.
Okay. Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, committee reports. Carolyn?
I have a report from the Admin Committee. The golf course superintendent spoke to us today about cart pads. He's going to work with the golf committee, but also wants the council to consider voting on an amount to be spent during road construction at Boulder Falls. He'll present savings costs, et cetera, at the next council meeting. We will be on the agenda for possible $20,000. Is that right, Nolan?
Yes.
Okay. For cart pads. Maybe not that much. It'll be up to the council to listen to his proposal. The committee's requested that some of this, some of this money be supplemented from additional fees, cart fees, or something like that at the golf course. We will review attorney bills monthly in this committee. We approved the council guide. It's not a policy, it's just a paper to be given to new council members, officer repayment, officer replacement policy. We also approved sending to the council for approval, paying off rural development loan for the sewer department. We discussed cell phone reimbursement, and that'll be discussed again at the next meeting. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn. The Airport Advisory Committee act will have a meeting on Friday at the 24th, 8 o'clock in the morning at the airport. There were no other information items on that for right now. Andrea, can you do Custer, Fall River Waste?
Six.
Next month, okay. And Carolyn, Downtown Historic?
We'll meet on March the 1st, next Wednesday.
And Kara, can you do Evans Plunge?
Yeah, we got some communication from Mary Goulet, who sent a nice note from her communication with other Evans Plunge members, and how happy they were about the hot showers. So we're happy that everybody's happy and come on into Evans Plunge. We have hot showers now. And we also do have, you know, of course, we're back open, and we have had a really good feedback from our closure and our improvements. And we have an eight-March special coming up, so if you're not a member, please come down and check it out. We also have an agenda item tomorrow night. We're going to talk about a strategic plan for future improvements. We're going to work on five years so we can address issues that come up, and also plans for specific projects, and have them all laid out for a five-year process that will come before council for approval. That's tomorrow night at 7:00. President's Weekend. We had a great weekend from the 17th through the 20th. Thanks, Chris, for that report. And we made like $6,733.72. So it was an outstanding weekend without any specials. We just had people coming in, checking the place out. So that's good news.
Okay. Thank you, Kara. Krista, do you have anything in Parks?
No. The next meeting at Parks will be Tuesday, or Monday, March 6th, 3:00 at City Hall. So if you're interested in coming to the Parks meeting, that's when it will be.
Any activities down here? Any activities going on down here?
No, I don't know. I didn't check.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
There was a bunch of play practice.
I was going to say, there's a lot of play practices.
Is there?
Yeah. We did have the choir and art show this last week that was very, very good. Low attendance, however, because I think they changed their dates, but. Planning and zoning, Kim, are you here?
Yes. We had a meeting last week on Wednesday, and we were able to approve a recommendation to the city council to accept Ally vacancy. You'll see that today on the University Avenue, was the one that we met with last month, last week. We do have our next meeting, March 15th, at 7:00 at the City Hall.
Thank you very much. Kim, appreciate your comment tonight. Bob, do you have anything on public safety?
Yes, the Public Safety Committee met February 15th at City Hall. Tim, Nolan, and myself are present. We still have a number of open items. The Hot Springs Safety Manual that we had talked about updating. We completed our review of that. It's in your info side of the council packet tonight for your review and suggested changes. And at some point, will be brought in front of the full council for a vote. We also reviewed the fine and bond schedule. That will be due for its second reading, March 6th, at the next council meeting. The street lights, we had talked about those, that the city departments and the police department was identifying the lights that needed repaired. That list has been given to the contractor for repair of those lights. The update on the new police vehicle, the vehicle is in town, it's arrived. Some equipment has been purchased. The police department, I believe, has received quotes on having that equipment installed. The update on the K-9 unit, all the necessary paperwork for the K-9 unit has been submitted to the state of South Dakota. It's expected that the state will let the communities know who received that grant sometime in the middle of March. The last item, we closed. We had talked about notifying the public the correct procedure for getting city services after hours. We talked about putting a notice on your water bills to let folks know the correct number to call, and that was taken care of. That was on the last water bill, if you folks noticed that. That's it for us. The next meeting will be March 15th, 2:00 at City Hall. Everyone, welcome.
Thanks a lot, Bob. Yeah, so the new vehicle's a pickup, right?
2017 Dodge Ram.
Okay, thanks. And Tim, can you do Public Works, please?
We had a meeting on the 14th, discussed there was a water main breakout of life in the path. That's out on the golf course, and it is a result of work that was done poorly in the very beginning. We also discussed the South Dakota Highway Project Utilities Meeting. It'll take place in March, and we'll start working on the water and sewer. The Boulder Falls stuff, we're working coordination with the rural development. Seems like it's one of those things that every time we talk to them, they change what they need, and they need something else. So we're still working on that. The City Hall roof has some problems. We're working on maybe budgeting money and some quick fix for that. Same way with here at the Mueller Center, looking at maybe budget more money in 2018 to do more work here at this roof. Our sewer project down on River Street is progressing. Evans Plunge, the bids are out for the roof replacement, and that is an insurance paid job. We're just getting the estimate. We've talked about the Evans Plunge sign. We've had a lot of questions about the big sign that was across the street from the plunge, from the, yeah, the book, right? Anyway, what we did is we had our, we had Billy go out and inspect it, and it was in really bad shape. So what they did is they took it down, and it's my understanding they're working on it, and there's the possibility that we're going to find a different location rather than right across from the Evans, and the reason, right across from the plunge. And the reason for that is there's been concern during the summertime with the amount of truck traffic that we have by there, and we have multiple visitors in our city that want to read that. So they're standing out in the middle of the street when they're doing this. So we're looking at possibly a little safer place to install that so we don't have, so far, nobody's got run over, but we're trying to eliminate a problem before it might happen. Also, at the last meeting, I was asked by Carolyn to find out what the status was on the gate out at Hot Brook and why it's not open. And it was a complete shock to me when I got the reason that it's still closed is that according to the easement papers that were drawn up between the city and the people that own the land out there, my impression was that the gate would be open until there was an agreement made between the two people that it would be locked. However, the way the easements are written, it is to be locked until there's an agreement made between the two parties to open it. So that's where we stand there, and I've been trying to give this information for a long time, and I was thoroughly, when we discussed all this years ago, there's several gentlemen out here in the audience that spent a lot of time working on this, and myself, and we were all under the impression that when we had the easements, that the gate would be open.
Isn't there some alternative way to put in a walking gate?
We have discussed them a little bit in Public Works. There's possibility we could put an entrance in going through our property without having to use that easement. There's also, maybe we could talk, we haven't talked with the other parties involved, but maybe there's something where we could have it open during the day, close it up at night. You know, there's just, there's two or three different things. Bob and I have discussed some of them, and Nolan's been involved, and that's just stuff that we need to go forward with.
Can I request that you stay on this and it not fall through?
I will, I will do that part of it, but if there's anybody that wants to change the legal writing of the easement, I would refer that back to Admin to find it. That's all. I will.
Thank you.
Go on with the rest of it. Also, we discussed some more parking areas around town since, basically, even when we start with this new street, the parking in this town is not good. And we're looking at some alternative parking areas that we can open up that are, hopefully we can get some agreements made that are close to where we can get our people coming to visit downtown. And that was the end of our meeting. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Tim. Okay, Skylar, can you do the golf course?
Yes. Jason's been busy doing tree removal. He's been brushing greens and doing ice control. And our next meeting will be sometime in March.
That's it? Okay, thanks. We had the discussion at Admin today a little bit about the paths, right?
Yeah, I don't think people are talking about it until I meet with the committees.
Okay, that's what I was just going to say. You'll have a committee meeting on that. Okay, thanks. Andrea?
We had a meeting on--
All the tier fire department, sorry.
On Valentine's Day night, there were seven truck reports written, red, sorry. So the numbers are really down on that. There was a lengthy discussion about the house fire, the car fire, and the ice incident. There was new application for a new member, which was sponsored by Adam Evans, and he was approved for a one-year probation. There was an insurance bill that came through and some discussions on the costs that were or were not associated with the trucks that were there. Come to find out, two of the older trucks did not have any dollar amount associated with them, and so those were changed and are approved to be changed. There will be weather spotters training coming up in April that they discuss to attend. And there is going to be instruction firefighter class, which has been going online, or they've been holding it online, and it's been going very well. And on March 19th, there will be some hands-on training. To do that, they're going to be using the surrounding areas and bringing in cars and different tools and stuff to use for this training. There will also be the State Academy at the end of March, which will be held in Pier, and then the following weekend, it will be held in Crawford. Both are wildland classes. They discussed, there was some stuff in the paper about using caution signs for traffic accidents, and they discussed to make sure that they do always use those to prevent a possible lawsuit, and also reminded everyone to wear the reflective gear for their car wrecks. And they're looking at getting another computer to have a second one, and that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. The next item on our agenda is for ordinances, and we'll have a roll call as we vote on these first reading. It's for ordinance 1176, because we do have some changes. Susie Simpkins from the Fall River County Director of Vehicleization visited with us. Excuse me.
I'll make that motion.
On 216, and to explain changes that would include, these changes would be included on the 2017 assessments. Is that correct, Misty?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I'll entertain a motion. Carolyn, you just--
Make that motion.
--in a second.
I'll second it.
Anyone in favor, say aye.
You asked for a roll call.
A roll call, I'm sorry.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Carolyn Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then our second reading will be next, at our next meeting in March. And the next one, we'll have second reading on ordinance 1175. Excuse me.
I'll make that motion.
An ordinance replacing Chapter 9 and Chapter 9A of the revised ordinance of the city of Hot Springs, South Dakota pertaining to fire protection and prevention. Motion by Carolyn?
Second.
Krista, second that, and we'll have a discussion. Anyone? Roll call, please.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Carolyn Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
It was six, two vote.
Okay, motion carried for second reading of ordinance 1175. The next item are the resolutions, or resolutions 2017-8, resolution to approve the easements to Brian C. Powers and Ann Powers for the life of the structure and the need for their assess, for their access, access, I think it's spelled, Lot 1, Block 22, Original Town, and Hartson LLC for life of structure. Lots 7 and 8, Block 22, supplement to Original Town. And we do have someone to speak, I guess, which one?
Would you entertain a motion first, and a second?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. And Andrea?
Second.
Skylar, okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, please.
Council members, Justin O'Neil here with Mr. Brian Powers. Mr. Powers is the owner of Gus's Ice Cream here in town on our River Street, also the quilt shop, and he's filed a petition for life of structures, buildings, and improvements on that part of his property. If you know where the Goddard staircase is, his property, Bud's, right next to that staircase, and he has some cement pads, the entire Gus's Ice Cream shop, propane pad, fences, gutters, staircases, things like that, that are within the area between the Goddard staircase and his building. His building is owned by LLC, Hartson LLC, and that particular building is attached to Gus's, and Gus's encroaches on Washington Avenue, as it's planted, by about 10.4 feet. So he's here tonight just asking for an agreement for the life of all of those structures. I mentioned in the petition, so that in the future, if he goes to sell the property or something, he's just wanting to make sure that's all cleared out.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I might see a question.
Okay. Are there questions from any of the council?
I went over this with Kim Barbieri today, and she's in favor of it, so I do, too.
And so did I. Okay, so we'll take a motion, or I mean, we'll take a, all in favor, I guess, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, imposed. Motion carried. Thank you for coming and bringing that to our attention.
Thank you for your business.
The next, excuse me, the next is on our agenda is for new business, discussion possible motion to approve and adopt updated personnel policy effective immediately or whatever, motion to approve changes. We did discuss this in Admin today. We had an item that was to be added pertaining to codified law. Do you have that available here?
Do you need a motion to say that with board discussion?
I need a motion. I need a motion for everyone.
What is the motion?
A motion would be to adopt the personnel policy, and I will let you make your motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the policy as is.
I'll second it.
And discussion? I would like to add, according to codified law, onto the one that was deleted. Just a second, let me get it for you. Codified law on the one line, South Dakota Codified Law 9-8-2, to be included as a reference to the mayor or in their absence of city council president is responsible for the administration of this policy.
Can you read us that law?
I can. And it's dash 3, right? 9-8-3?
Not 2.
You gave us a list from the attorney, but it's not on here.
Dash 3?
Yeah, dash 3, that's what it is.
It's the dash 3?
Yeah. Although it indicates the mayor's powers, and then 9-8-
I can't hear you, Andrea. Can you try?
It says that 9-8-3 indicates the mayor's powers, and then 9-8-7 indicates your powers in the absence of mayor. Are those ones you are referencing?
Both of them actually should be included on that.
Both of them actually should be included on that.
It doesn't say it should be included. It does not state that here. And there are nine instances in this document that say mayor and do not state that. And then you have picked six.
I'm asking to have this included on the first line. The rest of them would be in reference to that one.
Now, what are you asking?
That South Dakota codified law 9-8-3 and 9-8-7 be referred to on that statement rather than taking that out. I believe our lawyer's here to help us with that.
I'm waiting for a legal counsel here.
Yes.
My lawyer's here. Amazing, sure.
Sarah, can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Sarah Frankenstein. It's a pleasure to meet those of you that I haven't met already. This sounds like a legal question. I have not seen the proposed policy, but what I can tell you that I do know is--
Can you talk into that?
Is this better? All right. Need a little taller. What I can tell you is there is no need to state state law in your employee policy or any other kind of policy, because it governs no matter what. There's also no reason to try to change what's required by state law by putting something slightly different in your policy. State law governs, period. So what I can tell you about what I think you're talking about, I don't have a copy of whatever you're looking at in front of me, but what I can tell you is there are two provisions in South Dakota statute that allow a council president to step in and run a meeting or do anything else that the mayor might otherwise do. One is in the absence of the mayor, and one's when the mayoral office is vacant. In the absence of the mayor, that means the mayor's out of town. She's not able to run the city because she's not in town. The city council president can come in and actually do whatever the mayor would do in your daily course of business. Of course, if the mayor's just absent from a meeting, like tonight, the city council president steps in and runs the meeting. The other statute's something different. Vacancy means something very different than just absence. Vacancy means the mayor has moved out of town, has resigned, has done anything else that under statute requires that position to now be vacant. And so, you don't want to mix those two terms. Because I don't have it in front of me, please ask me any questions about it.
That's not the question that I'm asking. She's asking for something to be inserted here in six places, when there are nine other places when it states the mayor, when it's not requested to be there. I have no qualms with who's acting or not acting for the mayor. There's no question of that here. It's just merely handpicking where you want that stated. And we've taken it out, and we don't have it in there. And that's the way we've made a motion to approve it.
Since we just have a first and a second on the table, and it is a mayor absence, I feel like we should move forward with a vote. Is this-- I still don't understand what it accomplishes, because I don't have it in front of me. But is there any reason why you would need to say something different?
I have my copy.
So, what you're saying, Sarah, if I can ask a question here. What you're saying is state law would trump anything anyway.
Correct. I think everything that you need to know about the subject is probably already indicated in state statute. So, really, you shouldn't pass policies or ordinances that restate South Dakota law, and certainly not those that say something different.
You must love our ordinances.
What's that?
You must love our ordinances.
There's comments on that. In general, you should try to avoid those types of things.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any questions?
Where are you suggesting this be added at?
I--
Forty-one pages in the policy. Where do you want it to be added at?
I was just looking at the first one that we had deleted, so I would reference that.
What page is that?
It's on page 7.
I believe this, we went over this at admin meeting already. And it was, if I'm not mistaken, Caroline, didn't we?
We decided that we wanted to approve this the way it's written.
Without the deletions?
It has the deletions.
I'm just asking--
It has, as it's written, with the deletions, yes.
Or with the deletions. Well, I will entertain-- We have a motion in a second, so I guess we'll just-- Everybody, all in favor, say aye.
No, I want to make sure I understand what the motion is. Is the motion that we're going to approve the policy as it is here? Or with the suggested changes that you wanted? As it's written here? That's the motion?
She made a motion to have it with the deletions included.
The way it's written.
As it is written in your packet.
As it was included in the packet with all the strikeouts and additions. That's what the motion is.
That is.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
No.
On a roll call.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
You have a five-three?
Motion carried. Aye.
Five-three out. Three no, five got one.
Yeah. Okay. We'll go on then to discuss a possible motion to approve and update the city police officer certification training policy. This policy has been reviewed by our city attorney and in admin finance. And all new, uncertified officers will be required to sign this before their new hire documentation.
Motion to approve.
In a second.
Second.
Andrea and Tim? And all in favor, say aye. Or discussion, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? And we'll go on to--
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion to authorize finance officer to remove remaining receivable owed from Ross Norton of 1,096. This was reviewed in admin finance and recommended.
Motion to approve.
In a second. Andrea and Caroline, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion to authorize finance officer to reduce receivable owed from Kyle Majewski by 4,216.
Motion to approve.
And this was reviewed in admin finance.
I'll second that.
Okay, Caroline, or Andrea and Caroline. And discussion?
Misty, I had a call about this. Maybe you could explain publicly why this is so much more than Ross Norton's.
Well, their amounts were different from the beginning, is one of the reasons. And I can speak to both the reductions. They are the result of reviewing the receivables and attempting to remain compliant with Fair Labor Standards Act, and ensuring that our officers, while they're away at training, are receiving at least minimum wage for those hours that they're away. So, ensuring that we're not trying to collect full hourly wages back from them and meeting the requirement to pay them at least minimum wage amounts.
Thank you, Misty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion to approve temporary alcoholic beverage license applicable or application for Hot Springs Vault for the Taste of Hot Springs. This is event, this event's on March 11th, 2017, at the New York Civic Center. Okay, and--
Second.
Discussion. Public location at the New York Civic Center, so-- And it's an annual chamber meeting event, so all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item F, discussion, possible motion to adopt council duties and description.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Did we need to add something to this?
Oh, yes.
Item number 18? I don't have the paper. Misty, what is that? Do you have yours?
No, no, let me print it out.
For our code of ethics, I believe, is what we were gonna add.
I'll revise my motion then to add item number 18 on the back side. It says, understand and abide by the adopted council code of conduct.
You'd also need to change the front side, the highlighted portion. That's different from what the public had on Friday in the public packet.
We actually added to, as individuals, council members have no administrative authority and are subject to the council code of conduct. And we lined out that they cannot give orders or otherwise supervise any employees. We deleted that line, so.
So then, to restate your motion, it's to adopt it with those two changes?
Yes, absolutely.
Would that include the ones that I talked to you two about?
No, that would not.
Okay. On the role and responsibilities of city council members, I had made the suggestion, when I had read it to Nolan and to Misty, to just change where it says essential duties and responsibilities. The most important single responsibility of the council member is to participate at council meetings. And then you have an indentation with 10 duties listed underneath that to me seems confusing as to that would be things that a member could do and not as a whole council. So, they're just gonna rearrange that to make that a little more clearer for people like myself.
We're gonna put a one before the most and have that be number one out of the 18, which would now be 19 listed.
Okay?
Got it. So, formally, I would have to change my motion to adopt that line as individual council members have no administrative authority and are subject to the council code of conduct, strike. They cannot give orders or otherwise supervise city employees. Item one would be member in participation at council meetings. And then we would have 19 items. And number 19 would read, understand and abide by the adopted council code of conduct.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, or--
I'll second.
Did we, Swartzenbach, seconded?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Okay.
Yeah, it does.
It sounds written, huh?
That's not the leak room, you guys are safe. Over there.
Okay, let's move on to item G, discussion, possible motion to surplus for non-working light fixtures stored upstairs at city hall. And by state law, this is a formal surplus item, and it's required that we-- The estimates have to be less than $500. Go ahead, Andrea.
Second.
All in favor, discussion? Non-working.
I think you seconded it.
Yes, well, I think everyone can attest to that.
We have a long meeting tonight, sorry. Okay, discussion, any other discussion to this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion carried. Those will go out. Possible, discussion, possible motion to approve surplus professional appraisal of the following city lots. Fargo Prentice Edition, lots 43 through 49, Block and Stewart Edition, tracks A through D, Block 19, Second Minicotta Edition, lots 1 through 11, and Block 33. These are considered by Public Works in Admin to be surplus buildable city lots. And if we have an approval, we can get an appraisal and maybe put them back on to the tax wall.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Anyone? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion to approve the revision to Mount Gibson plots A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, and flight track Second Minicotta Edition in Hot Springs. We had this on our agenda once before, and we're looking at a few changes that reference the--
I'll make that motion.
The vacated lot. And I don't know if anyone has anything they want to say about that, but we do have building and development going on up there. So, Caroline made a motion, and you seconded, Andrea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carried. The next one is J. Discussion, possible motion to approve a request for the amendment of an undeveloped alley that separates two parcels currently owned by Quality Real Estate Property. Parcel number 7550001700-10-00. It's a big parcel number. Legal descriptions, Stewart's Edition, lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 17. Legal descriptions, Stewart's Edition, lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 17. This was reviewed by the planning and zoning and recommended for approval.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on that. Second, discussion? And that was Krista?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Did we do aye? Yes. Discussion, possible motion to approve expense of $21,000 restricted to 1-2 funds for the Southern Hills Golf Course irrigation project improvements. This was formerly unrestricted, $21,000 for use by the golf course superintendent. And this was to make irrigation upgrade purchases. And at this time of the year, amount needs to be expended and will still need to appropriate for the golf course budget later. So if I have a motion, we will give him that money to do his improvements.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Krista, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carried. Okay, discussion, a possible motion to approve city administrator to send letter to adjacent properties of Centennial Park, permitted parking for ordinance 1174. In our last new parks ordinance that took effect, the parking in the parking lots that are across from city hall were restricted to park use only, and this would correct that so that the businesses next to the park can use the area when they are holding funerals, weddings, church, Legion stuff. But anyway, that is what this motion is for. If someone will give me that.
Motion to approve.
Second. I just want to clarify, or are you on discussion?
No, go ahead, discussion.
I just want to clarify. So, what we're saying is that we want to create an ordinance which says nobody can park down there for funerals, meetings, any events, that if you're going to go down to Centennial Park, you have to call city council or city hall first to get permission to hold an event. Is that correct?
No, it's not. The ordinance reads that parking in parks is for park use only, unless otherwise permitted by the city. So this one, letter to these businesses and adjacent properties, would be that permit to continue to park there as usual. So, just the one time we permit it, they're allowed to do business as usual, just for that one parking lot. The other ones would be subject to the ordinance as it's written.
If the ordinance passed already? So, I'm just gonna add, so, I'm just gonna use fire department just because it's all in my head right now. So, the fire department would then have to basically ask permission, because we've done this, and they would just be on a rolling agreement that yes, they can use the parking lot for every event that--
Or do they have to ask every single event that they have, meetings, dance? I don't know.
Yeah, no. So this permit would give them blanket approval for all future use.
That was a good question, Andrea. Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. We'll send a letter to those businesses. Discussion, possible motion to reappoint Ken Tonseger to the cemetery board for 2017 through 2021. And he's been on the board previously and he accepts if we reappoint. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll send a letter to those businesses. Discussion, possible motion regarding Hot Bird Canyon easement pertaining to the locked gate. And Cosmon, Teshar, he referred to this earlier from their meeting. And it was requested to include this on the agenda. So a copy of the easement is in your packet. I need a motion if you have something that you would like to have in regards to that. Or do you wanna refer?
I would take, I'd make a motion that we table this until we look into, between the admin and Public Works, to some alternative methods of doing this. And then we could come before council with what we would see as a way to take care of this.
Okay, I'll second that. Can we table it to the next meeting? And that way, we'll just keep on this until we get something done with it?
Go on with that.
Okay, a motion to table this by Tim and a second by Andrea.
To the next meeting.
Or Carol Anne to...
Second to the next meeting.
Table it to the second meeting, or the next meeting, which would be March 6th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to be tabled. Discussion, possible motion to approve planning administrator Kim Burberry to attend the South Dakota Association of Code Enforcement Information and Training Conference on May 9th through 11th in Pierre. And her travel request is in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Andrea and Krista? Do I hear a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Discussion, possible motion to approve training request for Mayor Donnell to complete Fred Pryor's seminars, basic training.
Make that motion.
Okay, discussion. Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion to approve city administrator Nolan Shorter to attend the 2017 annual South Dakota Municipal League Human Resource School, June 6th and 7th in Pierre.
I'll make that motion.
Travel request is in your packet. Carol Anne and Krista? And discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, motion carried. Okay, item R, we have an open meeting summary provided by city attorney Sarah Frank.
While you've got me here, I thought I'd go through some of the requirements that South Dakota law requires of any public body to comply with the open meetings laws. And then you'll hear me say just a whole lot of additional detail. And you might wonder to yourself, how is it that Sarah knows these things when it's clearly not in the statutes? You'd be an observer if you note that. But keep in mind, there's another body called the South Dakota Open Meetings Commission that meets and renders decisions, which is kinda like case law. It's authority that supplements state statutes. So I'm gonna be giving you a whole lot of authority based upon the South Dakota Open Meetings Commission and rulings they have rendered. So the main thing to keep in mind, that you should always understand when wondering whether and how you should go about your open meetings, is to remember that the open meetings laws are meant to provide public input. So the whole purpose behind this is to let the public know when an action will occur and in general, what topic will be discussed. That's so they can look at the agenda as posted and say, hey, this is something I'm interested in. I wanna come and I wanna talk about that. Whenever you go into executive session, I'm not talking right now at all about what's listed on the agenda. I'm only talking about the motion you make. And to back up, I can see that a lot of you are in the habit of saying, I'll make that motion. I'd like to persuade you to do things a little differently. Instead of having kind of the motion written out for you in the agenda, that's okay, but you need to say the motion too. You need to say it. And in whatever way you wanna say it, it doesn't have to be the way it's on the agenda. And then Misty will write down what you just said. And that's the motion. I really encourage you to state the motion when you make it, okay? Instead of saying, so moved or I'll make that motion. Very important when you make these motions to go into executive session, as most of you probably are very familiar with, South Dakota SDCL 1-25-2 gives the five reasons why you can go into executive session. There's five subdivisions. You have to say in your motion, I move to go into executive session per or according to SDCL 1-25-22 subdivision, whatever. You have to state that in your motion. It does not have to be listed on your agenda, but I think it's kinda helpful to have it on your agenda because then that's your cheat sheet. You know, you can just look down and go, what statute is this? If I'm here, what I do at any other public meeting I go to, I prompt, I say, according to SDCL 1-3. And then I just make sure that you state it. Then you can say, yeah, what Sarah said. And then that gets in your meeting minutes. Those are the two most important places. It's gotta go in your verbal motion and then in the meeting minutes. It does not have to be on your agenda, but it can be helpful. After you state the code, you should say, "To discuss personnel, to discuss with our attorney a contractual dispute." So you need to say the code and then just, that's all more you need to say, personnel or contract dispute or pending litigation or you can even just say legal. When you're in executive session, you cannot make a motion to come out of executive session. You can't make any motion in executive session. So what you do is if you're off into this room or wherever you are, you just come back and the mayor or the council says, we're out of executive session at 8:15 and Mr. writes it down. There's no motion. Whenever you come out of executive session, you should say one of two things. And the mayor or the council president should say this. And if she forgets, one of you should pipe up. And you should say either official action taken because you didn't decide anything, you didn't take any official action in your meeting, or somebody needs to state a motion, what action you determined you wanted to take in executive session. When you come out and just don't say anything, we presume, and it should be true, that you took no official action, meaning you made no decision. But it's highly recommended, not only by the South Dakota Open Meetings Commission, but I may do it experience in this, that you say no official action taken or you make your motion. You can't decide something in executive session and then shield that from the public. You have to come out on record and state your motion and then, of course, vote on it. It's really easy to go into executive session and straight from the topic. I've seen it, read about it many, many, many times. It's so easy. So what I'd encourage you to do is think about executive session as just one way of discussing this, one portion of discussing a topic. You should always feel comfortable to go in and out of executive session three times discussing a certain issue. So while I really do like how you do your agenda and I, you know, here I come and nitpick. There's so many good things going on about this. But when you put just executive session at the end and say, for instance, it's to discuss legal or whatever, you really need to have that subject also listed elsewhere on your agenda because you have to be able to say, hey, wait, this isn't appropriate in executive session, but I want a discussion now. You need to give yourself the opportunity to do that. So you need to have it listed elsewhere on there. You can call it legal, you can call it personnel, whatever. So while it's nice to put your executive session last because we all know some people are gonna wanna leave and not just sit here and do nothing during all that time, I'd encourage you to think about it a little bit differently and to feel free to go in and out. What I've experienced many times is we get into executive session, the conversation strays a little bit into really good stuff, really important issues. And I put a stop to it when I'm in there and say, this isn't appropriate for executive session, but please come out of executive session and talk about it. Then everybody clams up, nobody wants to talk about it. That's not the purpose. You should want to talk about that. I'm not trying to, you know, quell what you're talking about. I just wanna make sure you're doing it according to the law.
To interrupt you there, Sarah, would it be permissible for us, after the adjournment, where it talks about the ADA compliance, things like that, just to have a heading called "Executive Session"?
You don't mind, no.
That states executive session, colon, "The city of Hot Springs deserves the right to go in or out of executive session during the meeting at any time?"
Yes, I think that's really smart.
That would then just blanket the whole meeting would be covered there. And if we have it at the end, it could be at the end, but also could be throughout.
I think that's very smart. You do not have to put, you're gonna go into executive session at any time, but I think it's helpful for the public to do that. So don't feel like it has to be on the agenda before you can make a motion to go into it. You can do it at any time, doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be on your thing. If you wanna talk about something that is protected by one of those five categories, I encourage you to just make the motion. Okay, contract matters, that's subdivision three. Keep in mind, you can't go into executive session just to talk about contract matters. You can only go into executive session to talk with legal counsel about contract matters or to review a memo or letter from me about contract issues. Same with litigation, threatened litigation that you wanna bring or you think somebody's gonna bring against the city. You can't just go into executive session to talk about those things. It has to be in consultation with your attorney or to read, if you're still in consultation with your attorney if you're poring over something I said and you're all discussing that. So keep that in mind.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
So say a mayor says, they've got a report from an attorney. Do we, does the mayor then give us the legal advice in place of the attorney? Or do we need to require that our attorney give us that device?
If it's anything that's not clear cut and you might have questions on it, I'd encourage you to either have me come or have me available by phone so I can take your questions. I get real nervous if I give you a memo and then I have somebody else try to explain what I meant in the memo. I really worry about that. So I'd like to encourage you to use me, to have me come or just keep me available by phone. And then you can ask me those questions.
Can we have phones in executive session? I thought there was a law against...
There's no law against that. I would not have any recording devices going because of, of course, it's supposed to be shared with the public. And I understand that maybe in the past, you've just kinda had a policy that you don't allow it and you could adopt a policy like that, but it's not enforced one way or the other by state law.
I got a question. Why you said that was brought up. What is the legal confidentiality of an executive session?
You are supposed to keep everything discussed in there completely confidential. You should not discuss it with constituents, members of City Hall who weren't in that executive session and already privy to it. Of course, you can discuss it with me. I've never been in an exec, I've never been at a meeting where I wasn't asked to come into executive session because that's what I'm usually there for, is to help during it. So you should feel free to talk to me about what was discussed, but otherwise, you should not be talking about it with anyone other than yourselves or me or those people who were in the executive session. One thing to keep in mind, should something go into litigation, even though it was discussed in executive session, after litigation gets going and if you survive the dismissal stage where a court may or may not kick it out of court early, you get into the discovery phase where you exchange information, then the other party does get to find out what you discussed in executive session. But nobody should take, certainly no minutes. You can take notes. Just keep in mind, your notes could be subject to a discovery request then. You might have to fork it over should there be a lawsuit. I take notes like crazy because my notes are never subject to discovery. So a lot of times, cities will just rely on me to take notes like crazy and then they'll call me later, now what, you know, what happened here? And so I keep those and they remain confidential.
Would this be an appropriate time for me to ask my question that I asked you earlier?
Sure.
I asked her because I was reading the minutes from the county commissioners. They would, they say personnel, the law, or whatever the numbers are, and then the person's name. And I asked why we're being told not to do that. You know, if we're going to executive session, it's personnel. We're not supposed to say Nolan or we're not supposed to say the mayor or whatever it is. And I kinda have a problem with that. I think that's not being transparent.
Let me start with the easier subsection three about contractual or legal matters and then I'll move into that one. So if you hear that the city's being threatened with a lawsuit, it's not public, it's not been filed, but you want to find out from me, are we gonna lose this or what should we do? The last thing you wanna do is say, "Executive Session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-3 subsection one with regard to the threat of the lawsuit by so-and-so court." The last thing you wanna do is tell the world about things that the law protects and keeps confidential. You get to discuss with your attorney things and under the attorney-client privilege, it's privileged, period. Just because you're a city body or you're a governmental body does not mean you don't get to enjoy the attorney-client privilege. So I almost never indicate what your legal matter is. There's some exceptions. If it's a lawsuit that's been fully aired, it's public and maybe you're considering a settlement or something else and you really do want public input, then I put it on there. As to the personnel, let me hit subsection two first so you can understand this a little better. It never applies to you, but school boards under subsection two can go into executive session to talk about students. Imagine if they put on their agenda the student that they're gonna talk about in their executive session. You can imagine the problems that would erupt there. Along somewhat the same lines are the concepts behind not putting the person of personnel that you're gonna talk about. First of all, it allows you to talk about any personnel you'd like in executive session. If you put that particular name, the public will become accustomed that that's the only person who's gonna be discussed and you shouldn't limit yourself. You get to talk about personnel, all of them, that you want to. The second reason not to put the name is because it can lead to a defamation suit sometimes. You don't wanna tell the public that we're gonna be talking about something bad about so-and-so employee because that can open the door to a defamation lawsuit. Maybe other public bodies do it differently, but I don't recommend it. And the South Dakota Open Meetings Commission doesn't recommend anything beyond SDCL, you know, subsection one, personnel or... If it's subsection three about legal, in your motion, instead of just saying, 1-25-2 subsection three, I'd also say, "To consult with legal counsel regarding that." Because you can't go into executive session just to talk about legal matters without there being consultation from your lawyer. So add that to your motion. If you don't, it invites an open meetings complaint, even if you were just doing it with your...
You had us put Boulder Falls one time. Is there a reason why you were told to put that on? And then we don't really know when you want us to do what.
I pretty much never put the reason behind there. I thought Boulder Falls, it was a very good idea because it was a settlement of the lawsuit. It did not include settlement of all plaintiffs. I found a number of issues, problems that could arise, and I thought it very wise to get public input on that. And I'd do it again for the next lawsuit with similar circumstances. But most of the time, you don't even wanna tell the public you're gonna talk about a lawsuit because that remains privileged or can be. Keep in mind, I'm telling you about motions to say verbally and then, of course, Misty takes that down, but the agendas are different. There's hardly anything that really governs the agenda. All you really need on there is enough information that tells the public the subject matter that will be discussed in general. It's nice, I'm not saying don't do this, but it's nice that you say discussion and possible motion to, but you don't have to. While I think that's very helpful, I think that leads to people saying, I make that motion, instead of saying it maybe a little differently in a way that they would like as opposed to how it's written. So just a little bit behind what can happen if you don't do that. Complaints can be made to the state's attorney who then can choose to prosecute you individually. Complaints can be made to the state's attorney who then can choose to prosecute you individually. A violation of the Open Meetings Commission can be a class-two misdemeanor. Generally, state's attorneys only want to bring prosecutions against those that they can win and unless you intend to violate the law, most state's attorneys don't bring it. So then what they do is they refer to the South Dakota Open Meetings Commission, which is made up of five prosecutors plus a member of the Attorney General's Office. Not less scary, but you don't, you don't want to be in front of them if you don't have to. They can choose to prosecute or they can just hold a hearing and you got to come and argue and justify why you did things the way you did, and then they can publicly censure you and other things. Always hold your executive session during a regular meeting, not before or not after. Let's see. Let me touch those. Legal strategy can be affected by what you state in your motion, so just be really, really careful when you're talking about legal matters because you don't want to flag to the guy or the company that's thinking about suing you or you're thinking about suing to tip them off. Just don't air your strategy in public meetings. I'm not sure if you guys do this or not. I couldn't tell by when you went all through your committee meetings. I wasn't going to pipe up and stop you, but did you know that you, your committee meetings have to report their recommendations and then you have to wait one meeting before you can act on those recommendations? Are you doing that? Maybe don't answer.
Probably not. We had a meeting today that we were using those things.
Okay, so, so what you should do is whoever's reporting from whatever committee, you should say what your recommendations are. You know, P&amp;Z recommends we do thus and such. You can have a discussion on it right then, but you cannot vote on that recommendation.
You can't do what? I can understand what you're saying.
If, if a committee comes and recommends and they say, "We met and we, we recommend," you pass a motion and then says this. You can't pass that motion at that meeting.
We don't pass any motions in our committee meeting.
Good, because you should only be recommending to the whole council.
We don't, we don't do any, any motions at all. We just send it to the city council.
That's good, but when you send it to the city council, you have to, you have to wait one meeting before you act on it.
And, and that's good because we, we, we're doing it, right?
So, yeah. A hypothetical, Sarah, would be public works meetings on a Tuesday before a meeting. They come up with a decision, it goes on the agenda then as new business for the following Monday. We still have the 24-hour publication taken care of. You still then advise that we do not do anything with that, it'd be info-only, act on it the following meeting.
Correct.
So we're kind of like a month out on most things we discuss.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that changes a few things.
Yes, it does. You don't need to say more about that. Just keep in mind, you should say, "We recommend that you pass this motion." And if you want to put the motion word for word in there, great, because you all should be able to study that and decide whether you like it or not, but you have to wait a whole meeting to pass it. And you know why? Go back to the whole reason behind these. You have to give these folks the opportunity to contact you or to come to the next meeting and say, "If you don't pass that motion or we support that motion."
But in some of our committees, we'll meet two, three times about something, you know, and maybe I'm just like today, I was just acknowledging something was on the agenda that we'd approved previously. So don't even do that.
Well, I, your committee needs to come and recommend if you have a recommendation yet. If you don't, just, you know, you don't need to say anything or say, "We're still working on it, we have no recommendation yet." But if you've come and you've fully decided what you recommend as a committee, I, I'd tell Misty what it is, she can put exactly what it is you want, then you cannot vote on it.
Possibly do new business and then just info, information or committee update and then if that continues on, it'll be old business for the next meeting to be acted on.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
And I would think subsequently that committee reports should list out any recommendations made specifically at that first meeting so that you can prove that.
That it was made and you waited a meeting, yes, exactly.
Okay, good, thank you.
That is all the notes I had. Any other questions?
That's all we had on that one. Do you want to do, go on to the fine and bond schedule?
Yes, please. So I wanted to make sure you all understood how this works and I'm very curious, and if we have law enforcement here, I'd really like to hear.
You do, actually. Officer Wayman's back in the audience there. I believe Officer Warford is taking, oh, sorry, Captain Wayman, apologize, but, and Officer Warford, I think, is out on patrol right now.
So maybe any of you up here would know, or maybe law enforcement would know. I can tell you, in the last year and a half, I've been your city attorney. I haven't prosecuted any city tickets that were contested. Do you normally write city tickets? And if so, are they often contested?
We, I have written any city ticket files. Basically, we haven't had a working fine and bond schedule.
Okay, that, that helps me a little bit. So I want to just make sure you understand the background behind a fine and bond schedule because it changes a number of things and I want to make sure you're fully informed about it before you do a second reading of it. So keep in mind, when you have a city ordinance violation, and I'm not talking about the types of stuff that Kim does, I'm not talking about enforcing nuisances or towing vehicles or anything. I'm talking about fines, where you want to fine somebody to stop doing something in violation of city ordinance. Without a fine and bond schedule in place, the only way you can enforce that is by paying me by the hour to type out a complaint and filing it, paying your filing charge in your county court and proceeding like a court action would with a complaint and an answer. And let me tell you, you'll never collect your $54 fines in a way that, you know, isn't surpassed 100 times by my bill. So you definitely want a fine and bond schedule if you are at all interested in actually enforcing those ordinances in ways other than what Kim does and what maybe Nolan and some of these others do with letter-writing campaigns. What happens with the fine and bond schedule is it turns those offenses that are on there, those city ordinance violations, into what are at least dealt with as petty offenses, and law enforcement will understand this, is treated like, for instance, if you're pulled over for, for a speeding ticket, you get a ticket and the officer should write a regular ticket like you would for any state offense, and at the bottom it, it will say, either pay, you know, $64 by whatever date, if not, show up in court on that date to contest it. So think about when you get pulled over for speeding, you either write your ticket on time or you need to show up in court on that date. If you don't, a warrant is issued for your arrest. That is what, that's the process that happens with city tickets, except the law enforcement has to take your normal city ticket, cross off state of South Dakota versus fill in the blank defendant, and change that to city of Hot Springs. And then halfway down your ticket is where you normally write in SDCL, whatever your offense. Change that to C period O period or city ord and write in your city ordinance. Also then be very certain, if you have like a box or a certain place where you put all your regular tickets, you don't mix the city tickets in with those because then you got to hire me to file the dismissal and just to correct kind of a little mistake like that. But so what happens there is, that's, that's a complaint. Instead of hiring me to type up a complaint, your city ticket is a complaint. It starts with technically a civil action, not a criminal action, a civil action against that person who didn't pay the ticket. And if they did show up by that date, a, a warrant is issued for their arrest and I then should get contacted by the clerk of courts who says, "So-and-so wants to contest this ticket or didn't show up and had a warrant issued." So then I'm apprised, and how this should work, if it all works smoothly, is if you're writing a lot of tickets, the clerk may say, "Sarah, over the last month, I've had three people contest. What day are you available where you can just prosecute all three?" If you're writing a lot of tickets and few oppose it, or were able to consolidate it all so that I can do a bunch of them in one trip, it can break pretty slick and not cost you very much money. The way you bring in the money is you get to keep 30, 65% of the ticket amount. Because you're utilizing the court system to help you prosecute these tickets now, you have to pay over to the state general fund 35% of the fine. So you might want to keep that in mind when you're setting the fine amount. Keep in mind, you only get to keep 65% of that. And the trick really is, you look back over time, for instance, let's say you do this for a year, and you look over, "How much did you pay me?" Because how many times did somebody contest it versus the amount of the fine? And that's when you say, "Let's scrap the whole fine and bond schedule, it's taken us in the hole, or we're making money off of it, or we need to raise the fines, things of that nature." So once a month then, Misty will get a check from the clerk with the city's 65%, and then she can report on that and you can go, "Yeah, it was worth the money," or "No, it, no it wasn't." So when you pass a fine and bond schedule, I have to submit it to the court who actually signs it. I might note on your previous fine and bond schedule that I got, at least Mike, he had no court signature, so I'm glad you didn't try to use it because the court didn't approve it. You have to have court approval of that. It gets attached to his fine and bond schedule that he uses for state court, he attaches the city ones behind there. You also have to give the judge a full copy of your ordinances, and I've already, I know these two have visited with you about my recommendation and theirs, to recodify your ordinances. I'm downright scared to stand in front of the judge and say, "Yes, Judge, I know that there's three different versions of that ordinance, but here's how I show you which one's the current one, Judge. Please don't send me to jail." You want an ordinance book that only lists each ordinance once, not only so the judge doesn't kick me out of court, but because your police officers need to write the proper one down and it's got to be the current one. So it's really important that you take a look at recodifying your, your fine and bond schedule. The public also needs to know, I've been involved in other cities, which I'll keep nameless, where members of the public went online and they looked, and there's three versions of the ordinance, and they can't figure out which one's the most current. They think they're abiding by this one, but, oh, no, this is the one in effect. It gets really ugly when people in the public are trying to abide by your code, but they can't figure out what the current one is. So I can't recommend that enough. Nowhere in your code should you have any mention of jail or a misdemeanor or a crime. You can, you can make a city violation punishable up to a $500 fine and up to 30 days in jail, but if you indicate that we may possibly jail you at all, that person who got the ticket is entitled to a court-appointed attorney at the city's cost. It's just not worth, believe me, it is not worth sending a guy to jail for two days and then you pay his attorney bill and then you also pay mine. So you never want any inference that you're going to follow the criminal side of things because courts can allow city ordinances to follow the criminal path, the petty offense path, or the petty offense civil path, and I want you to follow the civil path for your sake and for your pocketbook's sake. Police officers should not arrest anybody on a city ordinance only. Usually those types of tickets are written because somebody's arrested for three state violations plus this tag-on city violation, and that's okay if you arrest them on the state charge. But if you arrest somebody on a city charge, it becomes a criminal offense and they get an attorney and all that. So I, you know, I'll coordinate with the city PD so that they do things in a cost-efficient way there. Let's see, what did I? I'd encourage you to pass an ordinance before that goes into effect or for later after to allow the city to recoup your prosecution costs. You can do that. If I have to spend gas money that I then pass on to you and you have to pay my hourly time, you might as well attempt to collect that from the defendant. Some judges will allow it and some will not, but you can't even try it unless you have an, an ordinance that allows you to recoup your prosecution costs. So I really encourage me to do that. Keep in mind, there's a state statute that says, "If I go prosecute a city ordinance and we lose, the city loses, the city has to play, pay that defendant's court costs." So keep that in mind. If it's iffy, I always call the mayor and the chief of police or whoever the police officer was and say, "Is this guy a repeat offender? Can we win this? Is it slam dunk? How bad do you want to prosecute this?" Before I rack up your bill, I will tell you that as soon as cities start a fine and bond schedule, people say, "Well, I got written city tickets before, I got letters, and if I didn't do anything about it, there were no consequences, so I'm going to see if that's the case here." I do recommend after you first do it, that you do prosecute at least the winnable city tickets that are written, because if you don't, you'll get the reputation that we don't need to, "Yeah, I got this ticket, but how do I need to pay the city?" We'll never follow up on his threat here. So I do recommend that. I can tell you, in another town, I prosecuted quite a few at the onset and then didn't have to for another two years. Curfew violations, I know you've got that on your fine and bond schedule. I'd want to visit with you and the, and the city about that. Some judges are of the mind that you cannot write juveniles for those tickets without going through a chance petition, and that's this whole thing. You just want to avoid that, you want to write the city tickets only on the appearance, and that's hard to prove, and I can discuss that with your law enforcement at another Some other things that I can just share with City Hall people. Keep in mind, your mayor has powers under state law to release from jail or remit any fine or penalty, which I think means waive a city violation. Just know that that's there, the mayor has that power.
I think we have heard so much, we are not going to remember all of it.
I, I was afraid you probably didn't know this type of thing.
Sarah, luckily though, Misty and I did get notes from what you just presented, and Catherine Wayman being in the audience too, will have plenty to talk about tomorrow to get our fine and bond schedule set for the possible March 6th. Now, we have it as a second reading, but given your changes.
Please speak into your mind.
Sorry. Given the changes we talked about previously and tonight, it'll probably be a first reading, and then we'll talk with Nathan too about the fine amounts and get that in parallel with the prosecution remittance as well.
Yeah. Yep, I wanted to make sure you were fully informed before you go and pass that and then wonder why you didn't know about this beforehand.
Thank you very much, Sarah. I think we all got educated tonight. Okay, I'm going to go on to the finance officer report. Do you have anything for us, Misty?
I have no written reports, being the second meeting in the month.
Sweet, I need a motion.
You need a motion?
No.
At the first meeting in March, you will receive your annual report. It will not have the effects of Gatsby 68, which is the new financial statement that shows the impact of the city's proportionate share of our South Dakota retirement amounts. Last year, it resulted in a net pension asset. This year, it will result in a net pension liability. Your annual report won't have the effects of that because they still need the help of the auditors to complete that very difficult financial statement, but for the most part, it should be a very good annual report. I'm looking forward to handing it over to you and discussing it at the first meeting in March. I wanted to recognize a couple donations that you received notification of by email in the last couple weeks. Friends of Evans Plunge donated $1,137.99, $1,000 to go towards our handicap ramp and the remaining to go towards a swimsuit water extractor. So thank you to those of you that are involved in the Friends of Evans Plunge, we appreciate your support. And then another notable donation, Vision Source, again, donated to our DARE program, $1,500 to continue the efforts that were started last year and continue with that very valuable program. So if anyone gets to see anyone from either one of those two organizations, be sure to thank them on behalf of the city.
Misty, can we give them a hand of applause?
Yeah, sure. Heard a lot of reports from committees about Boulder Falls. We've been working on building roads in the Boulder Falls subdivision since we settled last February. I know it's been a long, drawn-out process. For those of you following it, stick with us, we're sticking with it. We are hopefully looking at a possible loan closing somewhere near the end of March, beginning of April. We're waiting on rural development approval of our plans and specs so that we can go out for bids, and we'll be looking to set notice of hearing on the assessment role at the next meeting. Our 2016 audit work will begin with our auditors in mid-May. Different than the last few previous years, our auditors will be coming to Hot Springs and set up shop for a week or so in our office, so we're not moving documents back and forth between Rapid City, and I'm looking forward to that, although it will be a busy time at City Hall. It'll be nice to have those done onsite and not have to jockey that paperwork back and forth. And that's all I got.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Misty. Nolan, can you give a city administrator report?
Sure. Following last week's public works meeting, Tim, you brought the attention of myself and now Tracy of a possible leak on 13th and Canton. I think you and Bob were emailed out today about that. We do plan to saw cut it, either we saw cut today or it'll be tomorrow, and then it looks like Thursday we have snow in the forecast and it looks to be that is old pipe, water pipe to be replaced. So most likely next week, the construction on that will take place to replace the old water pipe. For those around 13th and Canton, you should receive a letter from Public Works Engineer Tracy Bastian informing you of that work to take place. In the same light though with weather, it looks like Thursday we're supposed to get approximately three to five inches of snow. So if you park along the street, you know somebody that does, or if you have properties that you own, we certainly encourage you to park off-street for that so our crew can move the snow a lot easier without having to go in and out of parked campers, cars, boats, what have you. At the library, they've started their LED conversion. They focused on the interior, and I believe yesterday they were supposed to do the overhead bays, meaning the phallus buzz of the library should be mitigated and you should have LEDs there. Their next step is to work on the exterior lights, and then after that, we should have a more efficient library in terms of energy usage. We are still, we're working with GenPro to get a solar proposal for certain city entities. I talked with Ryan at GenPro today and he should have that for us, hopefully by next public works meeting to review. And then lastly, for those in the public that own businesses in Hot Springs, we do have a facade grant that's open now for application. I believe that concludes March 1st, so if you're interested, or you know somebody that might be, in improving their business exterior, the city is making available up to $5,000 for the whole grant program to do restorations and improvements to building facades. And that's all they have.
Okay, thank you. There's no mayor report, and so I would ask that we go to executive session, and we do have possible items to be voted on afterwards, so depending on how long that's going to be.
I'll make the motion.
Let's, yeah, let's do it just like Sarah's statement.
Yes, we need to repaint what Sarah said, using our personnel and the codified law.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Using the codified law.
You're going to say the code.
Yeah, say the code.
SDCL 1-25-21. SDCL 2-1.
Do you want to do it?
Go ahead. Make the motion to go into executive session. South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-21 for personnel.
And any discussion? Motion carries. We're going to executive session with possible... Oh, yes, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Counsel is removing, or getting out of executive session at 9:30 PM.
Can I make my motion? I made my motion that we go back into executive session and hear from Nolan.
Without the mayor present?
Without the mayor present.
Without who present?
The mayor.
The mayor's not here.
The mayor's not here.
We need to, without the counsel president?
No, without the mayor.
Not the mayor.
Cindy's on there.
Cindy's, oh, okay.
Do we document if she was present for the previous executive session?
Yeah.
In our minutes, do we document the attendees for the previous executive session?
They should always be documented.
So do we include the mayor in the previous executive session via phone, or?
I don't think we can discuss that.
In your meeting minutes, Misty should always indicate who comes and goes into and out of executive session.
List them each by name?
Yeah, you should say, "Executive session was held with each council member, the mayor and Sarah Friday's night." At 9:52 PM, Nolan was entered executive session and exited at a certain time.
Oh, how do I know that if I'm not present in the...
You need to be outside.
So I'm hearing, Commander, we can't discuss the mayor was present, but you're indicating she was present. Does that matter?
I agree with you. I'm just telling you how it is you document that, so...
We don't know, though, to document that who was present. That's our issue.
Okay, so what I'm telling you from now on, in executive session, if Misty's not in it, she should be outside of executive session so she can know who come and goes.
She's waiting here.
We need to have a second on the motion, and then vote on it.
I'll second the motion.
I heard discussion. Motion by Caroline, seconded by Bob. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carrying, go back into executive session.
And she's got to take a vote.
Oh, opposed. Any opposed?
No.
If she doesn't get it, you have to move on.
Okay. Roll call, please, Misty.
I did get it. One opposed. Sorry. Two opposed.
You need a motion to go back into executive session on the same topic as before.
I make the motion to go back into executive session for South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2-1 for personnel.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who seconded?
I need to...
Okay, got it? And I'll take the vote. Misty has to get all these things down.
Can you do a roll call, please, Misty?
So this is the motion by Kramer to go back into executive session for this legal issue, seconded by Schwarzenbach. Karen Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Schwarzenbach?
Yes.
Kristis Blaine?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Motion passed. Misty, would you note that 11:53 we returned from the executive session, please?
Motion to come out?
Motion to come out of executive session. Karen?
A minute ago, you had us make one. Now we don't?
You need a motion going to executive session.
Not to come out?
She did the right thing. She can be made her out.
Thank you. Bob has a motion he wants to read.
I'd like to make a motion. It's a three-part motion. Reimburse the city administrator for all lost wages during his 10-day suspension without pay to include the city's matching contribution to his retirement fund. Remove from the city administrator's personnel record the 10-day suspension letter, memo from Georgia dated 9/1616, emails between the mayor and Nolan dated 10/1516, 10/1716. Replace the two documents taken from his file. No retaliation shall occur against city employees due to any participation in this matter. Those are the three items.
I'll say a good name.
Discussion? All in discussion. Okay, roll call. All in favor, say aye. Do a roll call.
Bob, I'm going to ask you to clarify for my minutes. I won't make you do it in public, but if I could get a list of all those things with the dates, I wasn't able to capture it all.
You expect to be able to read it?
We can go over it together, but...
All right.
And for the roll call. Karen Hagan?
Yes.
Takes you a second.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Oops. Sorry, I'm a little tired. Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Schwarzenbach?
Yes.
Kristis Blaine?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Okay, you have six to vote.
I'd like to make another motion.
Bob, go ahead.
Reimburse the city administrator for any attorney fees to defend himself from the accusations used to justify the 10-day suspension without pay by the mayor and not to exceed $2,000.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I would like to mention... Hold on, I fell asleep. Nope. I would like to mention there is no statute to be able to reimburse employees for attorney fees, and there is no authority to spend city funds to do so, and it was not advised by our lawyer.